It's now six fifteen and we allowed a little extra time because of the weather. And we have one school board member who is still en route, but we do have four board members present. I'm going to call them, meeting the board, and so we'll entertain a motion to suspend Robert's rules.
Second.
Motion by Bruce, second by Carrie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Robert's rules are suspended, which means that we now enter into the work session portion of the meeting. And I'm going to turn it over to Anne Carroll, who is our consultant regarding the community engagement process. And Anne, you'll introduce the topics and then just let us know where you want it.
Here's what, Bruce is going to come next, so he's ready. So what we're going to do today is go through some very, some initial thoughts about how to, how to think about a transparent and inclusive process and get the board's support for some principles, some other like principles and some overarching goals. So those become the margin orders for the design and the implementation process. So, so we've got a couple items we want specific discussion and support for it in their final form. And then the rest of it is, is letting you know some initial thoughts. And then, nothing has gone in any detail yet, of course, because this hasn't officially launched until tonight. So, we're looking forward to having this conversation with y'all tonight. So I'll turn it over to Bruce to talk about some initial ideas about engagement objectives.
Yeah, so, you know, just from a high level perspective and some of the initial conversations we had, that the, the main premise of this process is really to, you know, look at three pillars that, that are the foundation for building that the right community engagement design. The first is really establishing that trust and transparency, you know, so when you think about what we have, right now, state the back of the conference committee is looking at this from a trust perspective, where they've been engaged every day, keeping open communication channels, making sure that it's a very transparent process. And through that, you know, making sure that all the analysis of research that's been done, any deliberation, any decision-making processes that go along with that, and also, you know, communicating clearly about, you know, the education requirements to staff members that we have here, you know, the vision that is part of what we've already had, have in the bedrock in, you know, HSD 2025. But, you know, taking the data, taking the needs, making sure that we have all of the options, you know, going also on our democratic needs, making sure that the census information is up there, or have, set up the projection.
Census.
Census data. And making sure that we have the census on the information that we're using and the data that we're using is something that the community supports and is behind, I think that we found, there were a lot of different numbers out there, so this process should help us get to a very sound number that, you know, people can, can be comfortable with. The second.
Just give us a stop there, let's, yeah, let's just see if we've got comments, questions, suggested changes to these. It's just this kind of thing you put out publicly, and so, I want to make sure that it's your case.
Well, I guess my first question back to you, Anne, is that because of your experience and having done this in many settings, I'm assuming that these first three objection, objectives are pretty basic and present and live.
Absolutely, but which gets, I mean, there are like ten, right? Things you see a lot, but which gets stressed and which gets put forth are unique to each project. Right? So, in some, you know, early casual conversations, these seem to be important issues that are relevant to this process at this time in this community and needed to be highlighted and put right up front. But how it's worded, and the order, and any, you know, language tweaks, now would be the time. I would just want to draw your attention to a couple of quick things. One is, using a trustworthy process, which is the, it's an interesting notion, and it has to do with how communities work. We can't make people trust us, but we can create a trustworthy process. So it creates a trusting bar. So you don't, you don't say, "Trust me," right, because, you know, you can't control somebody else. You say, "I'm going to create a trustworthy process," and invite you to begin to feel comfortable with it. And then transparency is always critical. It's, you highlight it more or less depending on the history, the situation, but it's all I ever do. And so, it's a promise that we keep, and we also invite feedback. So what I may consider transparent, someone else may not. Someone said to me earlier today, "You can walk around in your underwear and not be considered transparent in this town." And I said, "Well, I don't think I'm prepared to take them off," but, it's that conversation about what people perceive, and we have to work with what people perceive. Okay? So that's that, creating a trustworthy process and transparency is central to it. This notion of inclusion, that everybody's welcome to this, and that we really make sure that lots and lots of different voices and perspectives are heard. It, it takes effort, it takes outreach, it's not ever just sitting there and waiting for people to come, because you will get the people, but you won't get that full range, you won't get that full and inclusive range of stakeholders that are critical for a decision that has such impact. And the notion of consensus, it's not unanimity, let's not confuse those two, but consensus is achievable in any process, it's just the, you know, the method and the, the design and the implementation of how you get there. And that we don't know what the answers are. We don't walk in with the answers, that's part of the transparency, we walk in with questions.
I think that the inclusion piece though is engaging the full range of stakeholders, right? You know, we, we had some discussions around that even earlier, about making sure that we're bringing the various stakeholders to the table from the entire district, right? So it's not just, you know, getting to those that may be in support or against any particular party, it's just making sure that all of those different groups and individuals that are well known out there, that they have a chance to really participate and that the voices are heard.
It's children and youth, it's newcomers to the community, it's people who are, have busy, busy lives with a couple of jobs and several kids, and just, you know, they got a million other things to do that show up at meetings. So how do we reach into, into communities and groups who, for whom this is really an important set of questions? And create opportunities for them to not only feel welcomed, but to actually participate in substantive ways, which actually isn't very hard if you're just intentional. You just have to decide that you're going to do it.
So, Anne, you pointed out that there's usually about ten pretty common objectives. We started with these three, and so would be basically the process stewards would be in charge of finding those out, the remaining objectives.
And there's not, there, there will be a very small number, like three, four maybe, of overall objectives. And then there'll be subordinate objectives that show up along the way. So why are we trying to engage youth in the process? So as an objective, we're engaging youth because it's their future, you know, we're talking about. So, in terms of big overarching process objectives, there'll be a very small number. And at the moment, these are what are on the table for your discussion. So thoughts?
Can you tell us, step by step, how this will work? What's the first thing we have to do? And then how to follow these? But talking about if we agree on these, what do we do then?
Then, we agree on the next couple of agenda items, which have to do with some commitments to some core values and, and commitment to the level of engagement. And then we'll go through my very initial ideas on what some of the stages might look like. And then you say, "Yes, we want to proceed, yes, we'd like to have some process stewards go forth with these objectives, these core values, this level of engagement, and this kind of general sense of maybe what the stages look like, and come back to us with a design."
Can you explain what process stewards are, so that everyone here knows?
Absolutely. I would like before, because that's your decision about whether you use process stewards, I'd like the board to agree on these other pieces first, and then you can decide if process stewards are something that's useful for you. But these objectives are what set the tone for the whole effort. So if, if there's anything about these that you're not comfortable with, that you want change, that you want added to, this is where the board's guidance is absolutely essential. We simply can't proceed without your direction.
So, you know, a couple of comments in terms of the key points, right, which is what we're talking about right now. I think we've all learned that trust is a, is a staple that we need to have, and we, I feel, have a chance to do it right now. And we need to work our way back to establishing the right level of trust, and we do that through engaging the right team members, we do that through engaging, you know, the process. We do it by getting back to a point where we actually have the conversation of what it is that we need to do to solve for, you know, the, the issues that we have with this situation. Right now, we've got some capacity discussions that we've been having for a long time, and through this engagement process, as I mentioned, getting the right level of transparency and trust established, but including the right individuals out there, it will be, you know, something that will help move us forward, or at least get us to the point where we can, you know, move to a better, more trusting position as a board and community.
Carrie, do you have it?
I think these, okay.
Do you have some concerns, Sandy?
No. If I'm understanding, we approve these, and then what do you?
So, one, one other, one other point, though, if I'm understanding this correctly, Anne, just because, there's ten, just because these three are there, let's say, you know, we get into the process and we find that there's something else that really needs to be brought forward. At that point in time, I mean, we have to acknowledge that and make sure that we're addressing that. So, it's not as though that anything's the lead necessarily, Sandy, I think it's more, these are some, these are some bedrock principles that I, as a, as a board, we need to work to establish. And some of it is very, like, it's the big rocks, right? You know, like, they're put in the jar first, I mean, that's really where I'm at right now, is getting back to a point where we've reestablished our, our position on how to move forward and address some of these problems.
Well, I don't have a problem with any of these. This is the first step?
Yep. It is. It's resetting the table. It's resetting the table. Say, we're going to look at this differently. So, consensus, you okay with this?
Yeah, I think that these are, I agree with Bruce, that these are pretty critical for our process here, to make sure we get the process right, and start with some most important objectives, trust, transparency, inclusion, consensus, those are the objectives and goals, the rest of the master group.
Excellent. All right, let's flip the page. These communication values or core values come from the International Association for Public Participation. I, I've had some clients over the years who thought they wanted to write their own. You could spend an awful lot of time writing your own, and you always end up with pretty much these. So, it's always been my preference to start with these, and to invite you to take a minute to read them and understand, and ask any questions you have about what they mean. These also get published and put out there, and we all get to know each other.
Where do these get published?
As part of this project, all, you put it out there and say, "We are conducting this project, and these three objectives, and according to these core values, come from IAP2."
Okay, where, where do we publish?
Meaning, if you, for example, have a, create a webpage for this project, you put it there.
And where does this appear or anything like that?
That's up to the newspaper.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that comes out of our choice.
We do have a free press. It was kind of a little sidebar.
So these seven core values look really familiar, because I've been on the IAP2 website. So those are taken directly, directly from there.
Correctly.
Okay.
Yep.
And again, this is basically establish the why we're doing this. Is that right?
They establish the commitment to doing this work in an authentic, an ethical, a, a sincere way. And so, these are, they're called core values, but also statements of belief, that we believe people, you know, stakeholders have a right to be involved in something, and that we will listen. It's never about saying, admission of a friend, or, you know, whatever you decide is fine, because there isn't one thing. But, we're going to tell the truth, and we're going to listen, and we're going to be informed by the stakeholders ourselves.
Back, I mean, and number three, I think, you were pointing earlier, making sure it's all the parties that are, that are involved, right? And that is, so.
It's an interesting thing, number three, that last phrase, actually got added about, that was on one of the committees that re-looked at these, and we added the phrase, including decision makers. Because we were running into situations where these were big community processes, and people were interpreting this as an us versus them thing. It's like, no, no, decision makers are key stakeholders too. It's not absent or outsider, it's all together. So we added the phrase as a, as a clarifying term, and it's really been well received. It's worked quite good, just kind of answered this question. No problem. But other than that, I haven't made a change in twenty-seven years because they really work.
Yeah, and number six, you know, that, that does tie to Sandy's point, who wears the stuff available. So there, there, there's obviously the website, we've got the paper, not, you know, as I learned talking with someone the other day, not everybody likes computers. So, we need to make sure that we have different ways to, to have individuals get back their data.
That's right.
But then also keep the integrity of that data from the time that it leaves to the time that it comes back, or whatever it might be, so.
No, there are lots of ways to do that.
Sure, sure, I, I would.
We look towards stakeholders to say, "What we're doing," you know, there are lots of, lots of ways to do that.
Even at the library, I've, you know, a little.
It's, it's a common place to put things.
Sure.
I think it works really well. But again, we have to think about all stakeholders, and where they are, and the fact that some people are going to be much more interested in some things than others. But we also make it clear that everybody has the right to engage when and how they wish to engage, but not to decide that eighty percent of the stuff isn't important, right? It is all important, you can choose not to, you know, learn about that, but that doesn't mean it's not important. So find ways to support people, to, to really embrace the complexity of this without making it so complicated that people, this isn't about making it overly complicated, but it is recognizing if this were simple, it would be easy and it would be dull. It's not. It is complex. It's not rocket science.
Just want to make sure that the central, what we're going to do isn't going to be limited to be published or made available to public through the state's request, because a lot of people may not know that.
Yeah.
Unless you've got kids in the district, well, if you have a reason for being, you will not go there.
All right.
It's a lot of use of the same person.
I'm just not going to say anything. So, I think what's really helpful in these situations is that the page we use for this project is clean and easy to navigate, and we get a lot of partner entities, so you don't hear me talking about partners as we go through this process. So we'll find organizations and groups who will partner with HSD to be part of this engagement process, because you just can't do it yourself, and that's just impossible. But all kinds of other groups and organizations who have stake in the future of the kids and families in this district are going to want to help. Let's say, what we do, and we'll say, "You can host engagement sessions, you can put this information, you know, the links, the information, whatever, whatever, in your newsletters, in your communications. When you get up and speak to people, you can talk about those in lots of ways, so you, it's a distributed network concept." You know, we talked about this in the interview, there's no way a few individuals can penetrate the level of inclusion that you talked about in your first decision. So use those partner entities to really do that expansion.
Number seven, could be taken out of context a little bit, because it's really.
It's not every individual.
Right, consensus is enough.
Yeah, it's, it's about, it's about when, when we sit down, and I say, "We have these three things here, these three objectives, and I'd like to have your input on those." That when I, before I gather, before I end the session, I say, "Now let me explain why we're going to use that." Okay? So, we're having this session, and we've got forty-five more of those, we're going to compile all that information, and then we're going to do this and that, and that's how we make the, right? So, it's explaining to people what you're going to do, why they should bother, what you're going to do with the information they have. What's great about a process like where we generally discuss with a lot of commitment to inclusion and going very broadly, is that people understand very, very quickly that we're not making the decision right here, right now. That there's lots going on, lots of people are involved, and it helps them see that they are one of many stakeholders. And it helps sort of reduce the drama, and help people see that this is a very inclusive process, and there's a lot of room for everybody. And I don't, I really haven't ever experienced someone coming up to me and saying, "I don't want those other people to participate." I mean, we live in the Midwest, it's a nice thing sometimes. The people, they think to themselves, and they say nice things, so that's good.
Number two. Well, we've been reading these, it's, for those folks that are watching, they don't know what we're necessarily looking at, and I think maybe if we read them one at a time.
Sure. Do a round robin?
Yeah, and then just get any more comments. If anybody's got a problem with any one of these, they can speak up.
Why don't you start?
Sure. Number one, public participation is based on the belief that those who are affected by a decision have a right to be involved in the decision-making process.
Number two, public participation includes the promise that the public's contribution will influence the decision.
We'll come back, we'll talk about that a little bit. Because people have to understand what that means. Public participation promotes sustainable decisions by recognizing and communicating the needs and interests of all participants, including decision makers.
And number four, public participation seeps out and facilitates the involvement of those potentially affected by or interested in a decision.
Number five, public participation seeks input from participants in designing how they participate.
Number six, public participation provides participants with the information they need to participate in a meaningful way.
Thank you, Carrie.
And number seven, public participation communicates to participants how their input affected the decision.
Thanks. So I do want to come back to number two. Public participation includes the promise that the public's contribution will influence a decision. What that means is, if you've already decided, don't ask. That's really what it means. If you're going to ask for input, if you're going to ask for feedback, you must have the intention of letting that input or feedback shape your final decision. If you've decided, then say so, whatever it is. Now, that's not like, there's never one decision here, there are about seven or five in a process like this. But when something has been decided, say so. Okay, we're done. That's been decided. You know, this is, this is something, this isn't something, this is going to, this is not going to, whatever it is, that's what that promise means. And I've certainly had to coach prospective clients who never became clients because they really had decided. And I said, "That's okay, own it. If you've decided, just say so." Or if you've decided parts of it and not other parts, that's fine too. Just say so. What are the parameters? How big is this? How many moving parts are there? And if like, these five things are done, say so. And now you want input or feedback on these? Let's, let's go. Just be straight.
Number two is the reason why it's, of the utmost importance for us to obtain as much of a cross-section of this community as we can, as many different segments of this community as we can to get involved in this process. Number two says why we have to do that.
Yes.
But as far as, I, and I see that, what Sandy just mentioned, I see that actually in four and, and five as well, you know, seeking out facilitating the involvement of the.
And facilitating, right? Which is a difference between just sitting there and saying, "Y'all come," right? Because then they don't, only certain people come, only certain groups of people come. And, and there's nothing, nothing evil or insidious or anything bad about that, it's just a fact of life. So you have to reach out and facilitate and support people to participate. Kids don't know their stake, but we do. We do. So it's that creating that supportive environment.
But again, with number two, when it says, "The public's contribution will influence the decision," as you pointed out, this.
Speaking generically.
Yeah, there's, there's many decisions that could be, and.
Just means you don't ask if you don't want to know.
Right. And by, and by making this promise, we're promising that we haven't decided those decisions.
Darn right. That's right.
Does anybody have a problem making that promise?
Would we, would it be better for us to use a different word than decision? A public participation includes the promise that the public's contribution will influence the outcome? Does that sound less?
I think you have to own the fact that you are the decision makers. This board, you are the decision makers of the decisions.
I think you're best talking about the decision at the board.
Yeah, it is. That's right. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Are there any other, other ones of the seven that we read that need further discussion? I don't have any problem accepting all of these values.
I think they're, they all add back to the previous three points that we, you know.
Yes, you are well aligned.
Yeah.
Which makes a very, very difference. All right, some of you know about this, some of you don't. You'll see the core values are along the right that you just adopted, we're grateful for that. I want to explain how this works, which is, what's really relevant here are the columns. And what we're doing and coming to you with a proposal today is, you pick a column that most closely reflects the promise that you're making to the community about the overall process. And this is the nuance here, it's the overall process, not any particular moment in the process, it's the overall process. And the rule is, you could always go right, you can always become more inclusive and collaborative and more in partnership model, but once you've made a decision, you can't go back, you can't go left. So, let me suggest where we're proposing to start, which is in the involve column. And what I'd like to do is another participatory process here, and ask you, one of you to read the public participation goal to work directly with, who'd like to volunteer to read that.
I'll do it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The public participation goal for the involve column is to work directly with the public throughout the process to ensure that public concerns and aspirations are consistently understood and considered.
And then the critical piece that is a promise that you make is in the next cell below. Jamie, you want to do that?
The promise to the public under involve would be, "We will work with you to ensure that your concerns and aspirations are directly reflected in the alternatives developed, and provide feedback on how public input influenced the decision."
Now, these are, these are generic, right? So these weren't tailored to this project, but again, they are well suited. If you want to look to the right and to the left a little, let's go to the right first, you'll notice in the public participation goal and to collaborate, which we are not recommending at this time, is a deeper level of partnership to. recommending at this time, is a deeper level of partnership, to partnership, right? To go into that partnership. And the promise is, "We'll look to you for advice and innovation in formalized solutions and incorporate your advice and recommendations in the decision to the maximum extent possible." Now, I love being in collaborate. My concern about using collaborate as a promise in this project is because of the complexity. There's just a lot of moving parts here. And because I have absolutely no clue where this is going to go, I am hesitant to recommend that you promise to collaborate from the get-go. Depending on how this goes and where it goes, you may shift in that direction, which just makes it more fun, but not better, which is more fun. But I'd be hesitant to promise that from the get-go because you can't go back.
That's fine. I read through all these, I think that's probably right where we should be.
Yeah, I agree. You know, the, I would love to get to a collaborative state, but we have work to do on the trust side.
We do.
We can't start in a collaborative state because we, we need to, we need to involve to establish and create trust. And through that process, because we do have a broken community, I, I think we can get to a point where we're collaborating, but that's going to happen through the process, not through us wanting to get there. It's just got to be the process that takes us there.
Do you have thoughts for me on this?
I'm, I'm with you both.
I guess I'm fine with default. I kind of concur with Bruce that I'd like to be at collaborate, but understand that we have work to do. I had to make one comment on the empower it as to place final decision-making in the hands of the public. Isn't that really what you do ultimately in a rough run? Is place the decision-making...
Sure. One of the, one of the typical tools is about, it's about measure. You also can do it sometimes in subparts of projects. So the example I use a lot is, um, some of the design details for a bike and light rail station, right? Where, you know, you don't ask people about the footings, you don't ask about the roof bench, I mean, those are all code to check. But you say, "These are all the things that are fixed." But, um, we've got, you know, these five materials, these, you know, seventeen wootsie wootsies, you know, the different elements from a, from a physical design standpoint, community group, you design. So you actually can turn over pieces of things, but you notice how I put a box around it, right? So you put a box around it, you don't ask people the depth of the footings, you say, "We don't care." From an engineer or a designer architectural standpoint, go for it. So you can do that for small pieces of projects, but otherwise generally, that is an example of something that you would turn over. Oregon State has done some citizen juries where a state department may decide that they've got three major choices of like, some big, some big stuff like approach to healthcare, and may run statewide citizen juries. They're very expensive. It's very interesting processes.
Well, with regard to that part, the rough run part, I know is maybe the ultimate, we're not making any presumptions here, but that was one of the frustrations voiced to me or that I heard, was that the fact that they went to the voting booth and they only had one option to vote on. Why weren't we giving four or five options to vote on? But I think that's, part of it is the understanding of how our statutory rough run process works. You can't, you can't put out five options and the one that gets 16% of the vote is the one that you go forward.
Not with something like this.
And so by backing it up to involve, where you get them involved from the beginning, and they are involved in what, establishing the needs and the solutions and so forth that we're going to talk about. I guess looking to the left, as you said, you know, once you, once you go to the right, you can't go back to the left. But what I see is maybe from our last go-around, our involvement of the public was somewhere between a firm and consultant. It was not at the loss of...
Which is...
Because in that case, the board came forward with three options, etc., they probably didn't have the three options.
And, and sometimes there are, there are such tight constraints of some kind, technical or otherwise, that, or you've got like a, like a decades-long thing, you know, like where you fly the right away for a trail, and then you do this thing for five years, and then you do that thing for five years. So by the time you get to the last piece, it may be a year-long process, but there are only like five things to decide, right? So then it's much more bounded. So I did a project recently that was at consult, because it was just like screening on a trail that already purchased and was about to be built, but screening decisions had to be made. So there's just, so consultant work is...
But I'm good with default.
I'm fine with default, I think that's really...
Thanks. All right, Jamie, back to you. You want to answer this?
All right. So here are some preliminary engagement parameters. These, again, will be refined as the, the plan is designed and should point out that, and maybe we'll touch on this at the next steps, but we're going to be coming back aboard after this gets developed.
We promise.
What's that?
We promise that. Exactly.
So with the preliminary engagement parameters, what we see is, the first stage of the public engagement would be a baseline that's, would start shortly after our February 10th school board meeting and continue to around mid-March. The purpose of that baseline stage is to lay the groundwork for the engagement process and provide a baseline information to the community. And then stage two, where you start working on the needs part, and that you would expect would probably take at least a month, but about a month from mid-March to mid-April. Again, these are not set in stone deadlines, but just rough parameters. The purpose of the needs section is presenting initial community findings and begin articulating community-defined needs and priorities.
And you know, these are all very squishy words, right? And so it's just trying to get a conceptual framework to start a conversation.
And then once we've, and then as I understand, after each of these stages, they would check back in either with the board or the facilities and grounds committee.
There'll be a lot of checking in and putting forth. These won't be big, hard to do's. There'll be a lot of interim deliverables and interim part conversations.
So stage three is then the options would be explored, that we would do in mid-April and May, or it'll take a little longer than just establishing the needs.
Yeah.
And that's where we develop, present, and gather feedback on options to meet the community-defined needs and align priorities.
So you notice the needs are coming, the needs haven't yet been defined. So you've got to figure out what they are and get, so agreement on baseline, what are the data, do we agree on the dataset? Then let's talk about needs and obligations, and then get straight on that, and then, okay, so how are we going to meet those needs? Whatever that is.
And then sometime in June, hopefully meeting the stage four, which is decisions. And that's, the purpose of that is to elaborate on the leading options and develop more comprehensive alternatives that meet needs and align with priorities, gather stakeholder feedback, and reach consensus, prepare community-based recommendations, vet, and offer for board consideration. So this one, again, may take longer than what we've, we have established there. Then you should have a handout?
Okay.
And we're, we're on page four.
Take a, take a breath. It's a long drive.
Okay, Jamie, come here.
All right. So what we've done is we've established what our initial engagement objectives would be, gone through the community engagement values, and established our level of, on the public participation spectrum, where we would involve, and that would be under that involve. So now we're on page four, just identifying the different stages and giving a rough timeframe of when we're supposed to accomplish this.
And this is rough.
Absolutely. It will change. But it seems appropriate, yeah, it seems appropriate to have this conversation with you all, and Jamie, you guys have perspective on this, so it's, you know, if you decide you want it, it's already done, and if you haven't checked out that, or, you know, it could go a lot longer since the time you were here.
Then we have a bi-weekly readings to get this done by April.
Wait a second, we're not going to be bi-weekly?
We already are, yes. We're judging the line of stuff right now. That's why we're hoping to involve some process stewards. Any other questions or comments about how these stages work? And again, kind of constantly checking in, like you said, as you complete a stage, and there's not always going to be a bright line delineation between stages.
I think you should, the board should expect three things every meeting. They may be half of the group, half of the page, whatever it is, you need to know most fiction.
Stage one is all about the trust, you know, maybe not that rock down. And, you know, we can hope that we can move through that, but that one is not, you know, that's such a big...
Well, if you were to, if you were to look at the purpose, that's going to go through the whole project.
Right.
You know, you're going to be constantly dealing with information, constantly dealing with the process, constantly building trust on the right side.
And that can take longer than we...
It could.
You mean, but we're going to have a large group, maybe not a large group, but we're going to have several people who are ready to be at stage three now.
Absolutely. So we've got to deal with that, I can see. And it is also true that that's the difference in consensus in the community, right? So we don't have to make everybody happy all the time by all things, but there has to be a sufficiently critical mass of people who are ready to move forward and to do it together. I mean, I don't know where we're going, but we're going together. And people who are just willing to, let's move. So many people out there saying, "Come on." You know, so finding a respectful and responsible balance, finding our way.
Yeah, there's going to always be a spectrum of people on how fast they're ready to move and so forth.
And where they want to go, and that's okay.
Anybody have questions about this process? Does this make sense as far as how you start?
I don't know.
You do have questions?
I just have a couple.
Sure.
So is this where you explain to us what, what actually happens now, what you do now? And can you tell me now what's the point?
Um, I can tell you, you asked earlier about process stewards. We could talk about that also. So if you're comfortable with this basic thrust, and in the next 15 minutes you appoint process stewards, the purpose and value of having some process stewards, and, you know, I'm sure y'all can think of a much sexier name, I can't ever, but something, I'm sure, is this, this is all about process. There's, there's a plethora of content, I'm not remotely worried about that, but...
An example of content would be things like enrollment projections.
Exactly. Square footage right now, standards, state and national standards on kids' curb inches of space and types of lab equipment, blah, 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 right? That's all that. But the process we're designing is we go. And I can't do this myself, really what this, is what this is about. So I always try to create some kind of process stewardship room, that they come to the table in about 10 different ways, and I never care how they come, but they come, and they serve as the trusted advisors and ambassadors for the process, not for content, not for outcomes. This is not where you meet a bunch of, you know, content experts, that's not their job. No, they will help manage some of the content, they'll get all this input, how should it be presented, how should it be organized, how should it be compiled, absolutely. But they're, they're not positional. They're not saying, "I want this, I want that." So it's not the notion of getting a representative sample of answers. It's people who are, who are, who like process, which is kind of a rare commodity, because a lot of people advocates for X, right? People understand process, who are patient with the process, who understand it's going to change, and we're going to grow it along the way. So we're going to lay out kind of a big thing, and then we're going to refine it, and then we're going to fix it, and then we're going to move it around, and then we're going to go like this. Because any process goes out and in, and out and in, you know? You get a bunch of stuff, and then you figure out what it means, and then you go. So they're people who shape the process, and, and with you, but much more closely, go out and explain it to people. They're people who help us find partners, who can help us do some engagement, you know, because we can't do it all ourselves. They're people who say, "You know, we said we were going to go after this group, and we're just, we're not getting it as deeply as we should. Here are some ideas." I know some people who know some people who might be willing to help us get at this group on our stakeholder list. They're the ones who'll help us frame who that set of stakeholders is. I mean, you'll obviously see all this. They'll help us think through all the pieces of the implementation plan, provide that guidance along the way on a much more intimate basis than you can, and they'll report to you.
So process stewards, and the process, we keep using that word, but that's basically describing what we're starting tonight through the end until something is presented to the board.
Prepare community-based recommendations, vet them, and offer for board consideration. Yep.
But along the way, then, these process stewards get to play a role in how we engage the scope.
And they're, they're, for me, they're that cross-tech, you know? It's just like, have we got this? You know, is this going to work? How's that, how is that going to work in this community?
So the process stewards decide how they're going to get out there, help to the community and engage it.
They work with me. They work with me to give me guidance. So for example, I could say, "Well, you know, a common way to do this is to hold some small group meetings, like with PTOs in the various schools, and ask them to organize this and do that." And they could say, "You know, given the drama we had on this, that's just not a very good idea. How about if we do this instead? How about if they partner with this neighborhood group and do it that way?" It's that kind of nuance, I could never, ever know. And so it's much more timely, that's their only focus, they're not trying to do a superintendent search at the same time. And there are people who have a lot of connections and can say, "I don't know, but I know some you knows." And so it's just, it's just that, that penetration through the community and being...
Plus, they're helping to move the process along.
Absolutely. They're advocates and ambassadors. And they say, "Yep, yep, it's real, yep, it's transparent, yeah, there are no secret meetings."
Is there a specific number that you recommend for process stewards, if a district decides doing two, four, 10?
Um, we're coming to you this, this evening with a slate of proposals, and you know most of those names. I like to keep it small enough that we can all get to know each other and work pretty well, but big enough to make sure we've got a lot of dimensionality to it. So it's always under 10. I like it, you know, smaller than that, and that's what's being proposed this evening. It's just got to be a small enough that we can get them together, but not so small that if one or two aren't there, or we got nothing.
And is it important to have these process stewards come, or stewards?
Not stewards. Different role, different sides of the business, we would not ask them for that.
Is it important to have these process stewards from different walks of community?
It isn't critical that it's, that's the notion of representation. And I really want us to be cautious about that, because that is not the point. Because they don't speak for anybody, they don't represent anybody. That's explicitly not the point. They help us get to others. And they, they know somebody, you know somebody, you know somebody. So when we put together the whole stakeholder map, right, staff will be incredibly useful, because they'll have, you know, it's the nature of the school district, you have connections to everybody and everything. The process stewards bring increased dimensionality to it. I'm, I'm quite confident that we'll be able to accomplish everything we put into our stakeholder agenda plan.
And when you think about the conversation that we had, the board session, or is it a stakeholder map? That's a different, that's making sure that all the right voices are being brought into the process. And the stewards are there just to make sure that that process is continued, so follow, you know, check and double-check, to make sure that, you know, those key areas up front, inclusion,... inclusion, trust, and consensus is all a problem.
That's all my questions. As before, there was one nation.
Those are mine.
I expect you to continue answering. But that also gives you a bunch more people you can talk to about process.
I didn't, I wasn't real clear on what they do with processes, but now I am, so I appreciate...
Not content, just process.
I appreciate that. Yes, and they are not stewards, they are stewards.
I think...
We don't want any of them running around.
We're favorites, yeah. I certainly have dealt with that.
I've come to see you in work eleven.
I know, it's just so not amusing. Indeed.
So, they're overseeing more of the how as opposed to the what?
Well, depending on how you define all this, but they're process, they're process guides. Yep.
Any other questions on that?
Lynn, can we help you come up to stand?
I'm just trying to soak it on, so...
Still any questions?
Like, if you see on your first, the first page there, where it's got preliminary community engagement objectives, and they're basically trust, transparency, two is inclusion, and three consensus. These are the things we're trying to accomplish by the whole process of public engagement.
Three of the bedrock principles. There's others that are, will be sub to that, but those are the three big ones.
Put out there.
And do you have questions on the third page? Because that is, that's a, that's a page that should be well-understood. Did you come in on that?
No, just ask that we're looking at the involved call. That's what Chase is thinking. And making, that they, you look both at whether it's realistic and whether it's appropriate. So, the goal and promise to the publics that we put out there publicly?
I think the goal is to try and work more towards a collaborative model, if we can, but before we do that, you know, think about where we're at today. And that's more around getting back to a position of trust and involvement and engagement. So, you know, the, the point that's made is you can go right, but you can never go wrong.
That betrays trust, and everybody shifts. So, I don't do that.
And then those values that are on the right side, they're on the right side, they're called core values. We each read one of those, and we went through those as being something that we have to commit to.
How you feeling now?
Just doing it. Did Jamie or Bruce want to talk about the process stewards?
Okay, well, I think at this point, well, we're talking about the process stewards, and then now, before we go back to Robert's rules, so we can, you know, point them, but the process stewards, as Ann pointed out, is a group of less than ten. So, what we've decided is that we would have eight, four from the public, and two board members, and two administration. So, the two board members would be me and Bruce, since Bruce and I do not, are not assigned to any one committee, but he's in finance, and I'm in facilities and grounds. We've got two administrators, which would be Dave Granwell and Tracy Havish-Elle, part of this process stewards. And then the four community members have been here tonight, and we'll be introducing those at the point, I don't know, should we do that now? I guess we could.
Introduce them.
What's that?
At least introduce them.
At least introduce them, all right. Okay, we have Paul Borget, Jill Virchell, Tom Van Pelt, and Joel Skinner. They've been here since we started the meeting, so...
Somebody could hear your deliberations.
Right.
Which is really important, to start and understand a little bit of this. And it'll be Tracy and Dave. Because process stewards can't, can't function without, particularly with this much data. And they need to have the board's perspective to handle this. It's a nice balance, it's actually a very nice balance. About how it was... She'd be more transparent.
So, Jamie, I apologize for backing up a little bit, but so, the group of citizens, you've met with them, you've talked about that role, you've talked about how this will function, or what, what is the level of communication then with the other committee members that are not board or administration?
Well, that, what we're anticipating is the, oh, I guess I did leave that part out, is that the facilities and grounds would be the most logical point for the contact with the board, and to some extent, with the full board, at maybe thirty periodic check-ins.
Okay.
And, but again, because the process stewards are gonna have to meet on a fairly regular basis...
And they did know that, or they appreciate it.
Probably more so to get the process started, I suppose, and then continuing on as the public engagement is progressing. But there's gonna be check-in points through facilities and grounds, and report back to them, and then report back to the full board, as I said. The, this is kind of part of the next steps, but we can introduce that, that's later on the agenda, but the, the idea is, once we get the process stewards in place, and they would meet with Ann to complete the design of this process and plan, they come back with a report on our February tenth regular school board meeting. The board would adopt the plan at that point, and then move forward from there, and, which would be the public engagement. And that's why we had in those stages that we were going through when you came in, starting this roughly, you know, by mid-February, hopefully, the day after February tenth, and then just get the, get the ball rolling and start going through our stages. But there is no set timeframe, we kind of have a goal, if we could have this by June, but if it doesn't happen, that's okay, a lot of that's gonna be decided by the process itself. Some of these stages may take more time than we've allotted, or they may take less time than what's allotted, but that's going to be determined by the process stewards.
I think there's a question more, these people just didn't show up here tonight, right?
Well, you warned them what they needed to, they're...
Gonna be a process steward.
They're role volunteers, and...
But there was, I mean, there was a phone contact, right?
So, I, yes, I made a phone call to all four of the folks that are sitting here, explaining basic parameters of what that role would be and the responsibilities, and then here they are.
So, come here, please, go ahead.
When we go back to Robert's rules and act formally, the full word is that appointment process, I guess I'll give them a chance to make sure that they aren't going to back out at this point, and we haven't said anything to scare them away or anything, but, yes, it's, it's a little bit, the process kind of presents as it goes along. You don't necessarily know exactly how it's going to be.
No, I don't.
And we don't, we can't set forth and have this script already set for them to use.
Yeah, so the plan that you'll adopt will be adopted as understood to be a living plan, right? It will, it will be regularly adjusted, and that doesn't mean that we only change it when we come back to administration. We'll adopt it as a framework, and then we'll work the details.
I think if we're gonna be responsive to how the community feels about things, it has to be like that. I mean, that's, it's reacting to how things are playing out with the group, and how they're seeing things, and where they feel like we need to invest more time, or...
Or where we got it. Yeah, exactly, that's, thank you for bringing up that, that's exactly what I'm saying.
So, are we ready to entertain an action through these moves to Robert's rules?
So...
Second?
Moved in second, moved by Bruce, second by Lynn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we're back under Robert's rules, and in order for us to start officially this full community engagement process, several community members are needed to be stewards of the community engagement process. These process stewards will be asked to consult on the community engagement design and oversee its implementation. And as I introduced earlier, these community members are Joel Virchell, Joel Skinner, Tom Van Pelt, and Paul Borget. They've expressed their willingness to take on this responsibility. At this time, I would entertain a motion for appointment of these four community members to work as process stewards along with Bruce, myself, Dave, and Tracy. And these process stewards then would be in charge of the community engagement design and implementation.
So... Second?
All right. Motion by Lynn?
Just a comment, if you know what I could mean it. I know you said it's a miracle in a way, right? But it, it does speak to the community in that.
I was gonna say, yeah.
I mean, it is a really good community, and people wanna get engaged, and I think the fact that, you know, we talk about this now, but there is a great deal of momentum in the community right now about wanting to be a part of the process. So, it's an exciting time, I think, from that perspective, and it's great that we have some participants here that are, are, have a great deal of integrity and are interested in participating, so it's, it's good. Very happy.
Very grateful.
Yeah, I wasn't sure which you were referring to as the miracle, but the fact that we got four quality, four quality individuals, I think, willing to do this is something we're very thankful for. And frankly, I feel about an inch taller, because it does feel like a little bit of a weight off our shoulders. This should not be just something that the administration does, or just that the board is doing to make this process. The fact that we have members of the public that are gonna be leading this is, is really helpful, and just elevates the trust factor, I think.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think if we're trying to do all this ourselves, we don't, the trust factor isn't there for us to do this ourselves. Once we get that back, that'll be, be a different situation.
The trial perspective. But any of these that I do, it's really critical to involve community members, because they just always gonna have a different lens.
And when you consider that our goal is in the next ninety days to have our next superintendent selected. We've got a little bit of other things there, so where we can move the public south, we'll take it.
That's great.
All right, so we have a motion in a second?
Motion in a second. Any other discussion, Lynn? All right, all those in favor of appointing these four individuals to act as process stewards, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that is, they are appointed. Thank you for your willingness to work, and now, next, will be, I guess, next steps. Why don't you, Ann, lead us with that, as far as your expectations for the next steps?
So, I've heard, I've outlined pieces of that a couple of times. So, next steps is lead us a little bit, the eight of us, after this meeting, and set the time to meet, hopefully next week, because we've got this preliminary deadline to have a design done, which is realistic, but it's gonna take a little bit of work. That's gonna involve figuring out who the broad-spectrum stakeholders are that we're gonna involve in this, and we'll start giving some thought to our tools and techniques, I guess some thought to barriers to engagement. I mean, snowstorm's notwithstanding, but, you know, there are, the barriers come in a lot in different forms, or, I mean, among other things, we're trying to get this done during the school year, which means you got a lot of kids and families, they're captive, that's a good thing, but they're busy, doing what they're supposed to be doing, which is getting educated and contributing to that. So, when you involve kids and families and staff, gotta figure out how to get over those barriers. We don't have the barriers of, because it's a long enough time period, if you've got snowbirds, they'll be back sometime in this, but, you know, you got other people who will, who have other issues. So, we gotta figure out how to put that together, you'll see all that in the plan. The plan will come to you, and then we start rolling. And as I mentioned a number of times, it's, it's using a distributed network approach, so it isn't my going out, Tracy going out, any of the process stewards going out, and we're just all ourselves. It's getting lots and lots of individuals and entities to do lots and lots of different kinds of engagement. Our job as process stewards then becomes creating the content around which the engagement is occurring. So, that's where you ensure the integrity of it, so this is the package, this is the stuff. We talked a little bit about a toolbox idea, it's one idea, there are many, where you have a bunch of stuff, and you've got some questions, and it's all a lead package, and people can do their thing with it, and then provide it back. It's just a concept. But you, you've got to let it go, so you have to provide materials that you can let go of, not require the only way people can participate is this one little way at this one little time. You create a lot of ways for people to get involved. And by letting go without, without sacrificing quality and content integrity, you also build trust. That's part of creating a trust for the process. And you'll, you'll see it morph over time, and you'll see it evolve, and we will, as we said, we will make sure we get, we do it really regularly. There will be times when we'll present like interim somethings, findings, results, themes, I don't know, it depends on what the questions are, you know, but they'll come, they'll come to you for your information. Maybe a couple times where we come to you for some guidance. If we've got, you know, we go this way or this way, we got three versus four of something or whatever, they come to you, likely come to you, don't know when that will be, don't know what the topics will be, but we'll be back.
I think this might be a good one, although it's labeled the next steps, I would label it a future step. One of the things that we discussed back at our work session in December was the potential for a community-wide survey. And I want to be clear that the board hasn't taken any action on doing that, that was just a possibility. It's something that we may do at the end of this process. We may not, again, that's gonna be part of, we'll see how it goes.
And at the moment, I don't anticipate that being part of the process.
It may not necessarily, what, what the process...
And it just may not be appropriate.
Something that will be so effective, I may not have to do that.
I think it'll be substantially a little robust, yeah, I agree. Polls have their purpose, and they're limited.
Any other questions, Ann, about next steps? Well, we'll look forward to having a record that, Ben, at our February tenth meeting. Entertaining this type, motion, or adjourn?
So...
Second?
All right. Motion by Bruce? Yeah. Motion by, or second by Lynn? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Or adjourned?